The agenda came out. Does anybody have any suggested changes to the agenda just as distributed? Okay, in that case, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, public discussion, we anticipated public discussion this meeting, but there's no one here. So we will skip over that. Um, there's two policy reviews in the packet. One is the volunteer policy. It seemed like the changes that were being suggested were reasonably, uh, my, you know, not too much to them. Does anybody have concerns or Sam, Sam wrote it up, right? But she's not here. She's at PLA, I believe.
Any issues discussion?
Are there, no one had any concerns about the changes? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the revisions to the volunteer policy.
I move to accept the revisions to volunteer policy.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then the second policy review is the library copyright policy, which I'm just gonna give my editorial. Input is I really, really appreciate the backgrounds that you give to these policies. They're very helpful. So I think this was even more of a minor, minor changes. Um, any questions for Anne? No? Okay, then we need a motion to accept the revisions to the library copyright policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on along. Um, Ellsworth, I think you're up next.
The only additional thing I have to add to your talk about, um,
Oh, yeah, um, we can do that or we can do it, we can do that now.
Okay, um, Dan, Karen shared that he will be resigning from the board. And Carol asked me to reach out to the city clerk to find out what next steps are for that. So that will be, um, it will be considered a partial term, even though he hasn't been with us for very long. It is a male spot on the board, so we'll look for another man to take the place of Dan. And we'll, we'll decide to detail-wise forward his resignation to the city clerk by a certain date. It'll go in the council packet. Um, and at that point, it will become an advertised vacancy in the city. So we, um, they will host it for a set amount of time. And then we will have a chance to look at the, then the council will look at applicants and make the decision there. So we've got plenty of time to, to take care of logistics on our end and, um, we could kind of just keep them.
We don't know if they'll, well, I don't know, you didn't know the other day, if they'll just revisit the, the pool that's already been revisited or if they'll, I mean, this is about the time when they would normally begin looking for a new board member, except that it's not the right year in the cycle, so.
So Kelly, the city clerk, said we would have to announce the partial vacancy on a council agenda, publish in the newspaper and give 30 days before the deadline for applications. We keep applications on file for a year, so, um, so the ones within a year will be included in the applicant pool unless they wanted to be removed. They're contacted again and told that there's another vacancy. And she did confirm that the gender balance would require a balance.
Okay.
So the standing applicants, unless they choose to withdraw, would be eligible.
So if you know anyone that you think would be great addition to the board, you should encourage them to apply.
And if they're worried about the full length term, this one's a little shorter.
It's only five, five years. Well, it'll probably end up being about five, because by the time they find somebody, it'll be
Four.
Probably two, you know, it won't be four. But I don't know, I hope it's not me that we're having some board attrition, but
Yes, you rule what the iron truly.
Lose two in just a matter of a couple of months, few months.
Otherwise.
Can we make sure we post this in areas of the city where we may not have representation here? You know, between like neighborhood associations or outreach groups, just to diversify the group. Especially as we've done more services and so has communities are trying to take more active, um, attempts at serving.
Yes, but you know.
I wonder if we need to list that we can provide bus fare reimbursement if that's a barrier in a way, whatever. Whatever might be encouraging. If we still are allowed to provide bus fare or parking or something for volunteers, a long time ago, that was a policy.
Bus fare into the volunteer.
I'm just saying, I think we need to encourage a better geographic.
This may be a conversation for another time, but something I've been thinking about recently with my volunteer things is the time of meetings. And five o'clock is really hard for people who don't have flexibility in their work hours. Or who have children or.
Or both.
But I, I think that's been a problem for some board members in the past when they either have to, they don't recognize the city and are kind of rushed to get in here. Or they have childcare challenges.
But I think you, there's more to it than, I mean, there's people who have trouble making five o'clock. But you're also gonna have people who are gonna resist a later.
Of course, there's no perfect timeline.
I think you need to consider staff as well.
Right, it's a true truth. No, I think that's a good point, but, you know, I'm not saying it's gonna be easy to move. I'm just saying if there's anything we can do to encourage our outreach. Or if someone, you know, inquires and says a particular hurdle, if we at least can hear about it.
It is, I mean, finding meeting times is, it works for everybody. Yeah, it's because everybody's on a different schedule. I mean, I know, you know, if I had to start at seven thirty in the evening, shoot, I would.
I agree, but I look at it in terms of, I look at it in terms of are there patterns of people who join the board that we need to expand, you know, and maybe go better, and do we have any structural hurdles that make it impossible? And if so, can we at least discuss those? So, um, if it means we'd have to have a discussion about a meeting in order to be more inclusive, I'd be willing to have that discussion.
That brings up another thing that has come up in Iowa, well, Iowa law last year, when, uh, in order for us to have quorum physical, but quorum must be here physically.
That's interesting, too.
So if we were, I'm wondering out loud if we could entertain, um, that as an incentive, someone attending remotely, uh, regular.
I know, and we had. And, you know, because
I know.
If then you end up with five people who want to attend remotely, then what do you do?
Yep, and then we hit our first non-quorum and we can't have a meeting if that happens.
You know, it's, it's better to, I mean, what, who was it who, who phoned in the, you know, that's like a one-time thing is very easy, because it's like, I'm battling, I need to do this. Rather than, I mean, that was really the problem with, with Kelly, was she wanted to do it full-time. Well, then what if somebody else wants to do it full-time and at some point?
And it would be a terrible look to not allow Kelly and then allow someone else.
Right, so I, I, that would be a bad look. Anyway, I don't know, it's a problem. Maybe certain times are always a problem. Okay.
That was all the post-publication.
Thank you.
Just to go back to maybe the city's diversity, staff members could advise us on what's been coming gathering. So, um, just conclusion, just wanna make sure we're doing all.
I mean, I just, I, I had never had any idea until, till we had to, to replace Kelly with Claire. I never had any idea how many applicants they got, but it were a fair number. I mean, ten maybe? So it's, it's not like it's a hurdle that nobody can get.
No, my experience is that it's often, it's often the university community and a professional applicant. And I just want to make sure that we, we reach out more and represent the community better. If we can, if it's an interest.
Do it to their ability, yeah.
Okay, any other comments about Ellsworth? We're done here in a few minutes.
It's a longer field. I could probably talk about this for a couple of hours.
Nothing in the bylaws that we can't finish over.
No.
Yeah, the last one was.
And I actually might not be here next month, so it's great.
Before he's up?
Actually, yes.
Okay, um, so next up is the adult services report. Jason?
I'll dive on that a lot, because that's exciting. I did nothing big size to you. Stats at jet, there's subtitles at jet. And processes.
I found it interesting to learn that we borrow so much more than, than we lend.
It has historically, yeah, even City of American, when I wasn't in this role, sort of limited, but it wasn't a one-to-one. Like I mentioned, it's just something that will never be. We're just so busy with our own customer base, uh, that lending happens.
Oh, not when new things is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, most of the things that you'll see from Silas' suggestions every day are like, what's the top 10 books in the kitchen? Because it's little libraries, I can't.
Can't afford a lot of copies of them.
But we also have fifteen of ours.
I feel like that's true of other places, too, because as a small town librarian, we were definitely borrowing more than we were lending, you know, almost everywhere. I was curious, does this include, do you guys do the book, the book club sharing? Is that included in here?
We've got.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I know like a state association has a really good kind of book club list. And we were doing lots of sharing at a small town library of those book club sets. And I was just curious if you guys were doing lending and borrowing of those.
Yeah, borrowing. But we do one, uh, art kits, and we do a whole I O reads kits every year. Okay, books, and then we did the B Y O book, we would buy kits for that for a whole time.
Yeah, I know it was a lifesaver for me as a small town librarian, because there's no way we could buy 10 copies of anything ever.
We actually have like de facto kits on the shelf most of the time. And we'll have, you know, the high hopes that we have to support. Call it, we've got some puppies, a kit, but it's not a kit. So if there was some way to share that with small libraries, like, you know, if you were interested in signing up a big, nine months ago, there's actual.
Yeah.
It's not quite working that way, software.
Right, right. I also think it's hilarious that the Texas Chainsaw Massacre, thank you for including that one, that made me chuckle. The fortieth anniversary, yeah, amazing, fantastic.
Well, I don't.
There's a new Stacey, she goes back and back to the classics.
At least we're gushing, for sure. Other comments? No? Right, um, Sam isn't here, so I don't know if people have things that they noticed and.
I did a question about social media, if anyone's aware of plans on announcing, uh, late, uh, late fine free. I think I'll go sign to what the, what the game plan is there, because I'm excited.
I think we're sort of trying to decide can we announce it when this current extension ends, which would be at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay.
Um, or to, or let's try to do it before then, because we want to make a big deal out of it.
Yeah, right.
Solvatory, but it is currently in place for a while longer, so.
All right.
The last, um, communication we had with you, that was a conversation of looking at, rolling it out as part of the, um, that fiscal year change.
Cool, well, that's great.
Nice tie-in with summer reading. Summer reading's always like your big, big deal outreach opportunity.
I've lost track. The children's things are already permanent, right?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so it's tricky to get more adult participation in summer readings, so that just sounds like one more way you could get the, you know, get it out there that even adults don't have, even though you've kind of been doing it.
I have good books coming out lately, too.
Do a lot of people do the book bracket? You don't know. I guess you don't, it looks like you don't actually have to read the book. Other comments about Sam's report? Patty, I think you're next.
And you do end a little earlier than you have in the past.
I'll see, there's.
I'd be happy to answer questions, but just a couple of updates we shared with Ellsworth, a long wait to know that. Someone who returned books that were so in good letters, otherwise overdue, that they felt they should find themselves. So they made a gift, because they didn't have funds. They called them dues, but then we got what they were. So that was kind of fun and nice. Um, and an opportunity would send out business partnership invitations to some folks who have been partners with the library in the past, but haven't yet renewed yet. And in response to one of the foster plans has announced that in the month of May, you buy an appliance, some percentage, and you'll know how much yet will come through the library. So if you're planning a kitchen remodel, um, or something, or your washer breaks, you can be purchasing in May. And instead of eat out to read, you can be washed, cool, please.
I'm gonna be on there, commercials, they have plenty too much of.
They do have commercials, yes. I'm sorry, I wasn't familiar with this program that they do.
They all dance really poorly. None of their clients.
Fantastic.
Anyway, so that was a really nice response, and let's see how that goes. What is that? You just bugging away?
Okay. How was your wine tasting? Just curious, since it got bumped and, you know, like when you're struggling with a date like that.
Thank you, Claire, for asking. There were a thousand seven people there on and off during the couple of hours. We made a couple hundred dollars, so they did five percent of sales. I'm just astonished at the amount of work.
On a Friday. A lot of folks cycle through.
Yeah, and I, I think I understand now, I was like way up there per capita consumption. So yay, us, so that's really nice. If I could ask that in time.
Hopefully it could be a firm date.
Well, they were nervous, I understand them.
Yeah, the time.
People who were there, um, tried to wear their mask.
Oh, okay. Is that why they kept putting it off was because of COVID?
Right.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they had not done anything in person, so it was their first, and it was fewer wine vendors. The vendors were also like, boy, they, they wanted it anyway. But it turned out to be okay. Everybody thought it was all right. We were so proud of this husband, but it was nice, and it was nice.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay.
A note from Children's Library, unless I'm missing it. Anything from, from Children's Library?
I think she's on next month.
Okay, sorry. Melissa Toys came back out and I cried.
In a good way?
In a good way. Well, no, 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 it was great, just it, I don't know, it's those little hints of normalcy peeking back in and just seeing kids playing with, uh, do plays. I had no idea that I was gonna be hit that hard by it, but.
Keep your fingers crossed, but, yeah. Whatever variant it is doesn't decide to do your head in a big way. I, the president's report, well, I was gonna talk about Dan and Ellsworth took that away from me. So I don't really have very much, but I wanted to ask, um, especially Tom, did we get any feedback from the, the letter?
So I didn't interview with DI, that story came out a day or two ago. That's the only reporter I talked to.
Okay.
I thought the story was fine. My quotes looked like things I might have said.
She resembled those.
Library, one of the library journals.
Oh, that never came to fruition.
Didn't happen.
So, uh, yeah, LJ, the editor, said, would you be interested in doing something? And I said, sure, let's talk. And I didn't hear back. Now, their cycle presumably is fairly slow, and she might just put it on a back burner, I don't know. I didn't push that.
Okay. I think it sounded like the, the, the bill where you put at rest teachers and librarians, I think would go anywhere, right?
Not this year.
That's good. Um.
Sorry.
I was, I was Clifford.
Oh. There's a picture there.
This one?
Yeah.
That's not me, no. That one isn't, I was not that Clifford. I was an outdoor Clifford. It was my first experience as a guy.
That's awesome.
Although, uh, I will say that Clifford, uh, costume was slightly damaged, so there's, you can, they've got eye vision, snout vision and mouth vision, and I only had snout vision, so, yeah, I was kind of, you know. But I had a great helper who was like, look at her, just a little pointy ear left.
Handler make it.
Yeah, you don't want that stuff on him because you can't see them.
Those costumes. City of Lynn?
Yeah, I think several of them.
They run.
I think they own Clifford. That's what, that's what they told me, yeah.
They will move out to, uh, the home.
There's a costume library?
Yes, informal costume library.
Where?
Well, it's different libraries.
Oh, okay. Sharing of light.
She puts that very excited with that, if you notice.
Could I, probably?
Could be Clifford. Announcements from members.
I should probably announce I'm not sure I'm gonna be at the next meeting because my baby is due. So, um, probably the technical due date is May 5th, but my doctor said we might go a week early, which would be the 28th, which would be the meeting, so theoretically, I will not be here next time.
You couldn't, you know, connect, but.
Yeah, I promised I had pictures, but I may not zoom.
Well, I hope everything, whenever the baby decides to come, it was really, really well.
It's kind of cute that kids at school, I've been announcing it, but we don't have a name picked out, so I have a, a voting box on the library desk where the elementary school kids at Lucas are voting for mostly their own name, but.
Any, uh, any like special, uh, unique kid ones?
Anything inappropriate, which is kind of what I was expecting in the first round, because I was a teen librarian before, and I know how voting boxes go, but, um.
Are you really gonna pick with the?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. I have my own list, I have my own list, so ones that have nominated that we like will go onto the pool, but anyway, it's gonna be a good time.
Should think about training your students and like, here, everyone here is Hot Wheels Godzilla.
One of the sixth graders has given me four or five Greek gods or goddesses to name them after, so that's kind of exciting. I don't know if I'm gonna have a baby girl very tossed, but, um, we'll see.
I, I think it's amazing how, how names go in, in cycles. I mean, my daughter's a teacher and, you know, there's like 12 Jacksons in a class of 20. My son thought they were naming their newborn Cooper, and that was such an unusual, there's Coopers all over the place. Dog Coopers and people Coopers, they're everywhere. There was even another Cooper in the newborn nursery. So if you want a unique name, don't call it Cooper.
Yeah.
Okay, the communications for articles about the letter. Again, I really appreciate the work that went into that, especially where they're doing the writing. And goodness gracious, we're at the end. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the last meeting and, um, approving the dispersments. Does anybody have corrections to the minutes? I didn't notice anything. No? And the dispersments. And I guess we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I need a second. Okay.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Brings us. You just go take a peek at the agenda for the March meeting. No, April meeting. Yeah, well, it's, it's the end of a quarter, so there probably, it probably will be a little bit more of a significant board meeting in terms of time. I am still looking for one person who would like to be appointed to the, our representative to the Friends Foundation Board. Send me an email or something if you think that that's something that interests you. I, you know, it's the same problem with the meeting times. When do you meet? Four o'clock, four o'clock, so.
So it's bush.
Anyway. What?
Roughly six times a year, but not really on a set schedule. It's on Thursday, though, not a Thursday meet. But this year, lately, it's been the second Thursday. And I think they're July, September, November, maybe, and then I forget.
Do we have one in May?
Well, I was thinking next fiscal year.
Oh, right, sorry.
Yes, there's, um, this year's calendar is.
It's like, I know, I just saw one on my calendar.
From my experience, like the board meetings were pretty, pretty fast.
They're very efficient.
They're very efficient.
Like they don't sometimes fifteen.
Yeah, they don't last very long. Um, I also decided to serve on the fundraising committee. I also decided to serve on the fundraising committee, and I learned a lot and was really amazed at the work that goes into the fundraising that the foundation does. If you choose to be a part of a committee, which is not required if you're the board, library board representative, you know, it'll take a little more time. We were, we were meeting at really odd times, but it was COVID. Right, ten in the morning.
Nine o'clock, and I changed to ten o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, so.
It's changed, yeah.
But just think about it, if you think it's something you're interested in, then.
I'll just say, I'd be glad to do it if you are looking for someone.
I am looking for one person, I'm assuming you don't want to continue a third year. I can, if you need me to, but I hope I'm not too, I don't. You're gonna have a puppy. Okay, in that case, unless anybody has anything else, I will. Fantastic.